This meeting of the Gadsden City Council now come to order and the chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Counselman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. David Lawson will lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we're thankful for the state that you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity to come out and serve the city that we call Gadsden. We ask that all decisions made be done so in a way that would be pleasing in your sight. We ask that you continue to have your hands involved in all levels of our governmental structure. We ask that you continue to watch over our troops as they continue to do what they have committed themselves to doing. And we will be ever thankful to give you the praise in the name of your son. These things we ask. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that your cell phones are either turned off or in a vibrate position. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting on September the 12th, the work session and council meeting on September the 13th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of September the 9th through the 15th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation to Mayor. Unfinished business, A is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 639 Abercombe Street in District 3. The resolution was tabled for 30 days on August the 16th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, based on the recommendation of the building department, we're going to ask for an additional 30-day table.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
B is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 530 Hillary Street in District 3. The resolution was tabled for seven days on September the 13th. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I did get a call on this, but since they're not here, I'm going to ask that we go ahead and abate the nuisance and I'll get back with them.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
C is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 321 8th Street South in District 4. The resolution was tabled for 30 days on September the 13th. What is the pleasure of the council? Since there's no one here, I'm going to make a motion.
You want to abate it or you want to?
I don't want to abate. Go ahead and abate the nuisance.
Okay. Make a motion, we'll abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, 9 through 11, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct public hearings allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for grass cutting that has already been performed and we have three locations. I'm going to read the addresses and names and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. 705 Harvey Street, District 3, $391, Alabama Department of Revenue Property Tax Division, Jim P. Thornton and others. 318 Bryan in District 6, $571, State of Alabama Property Tax Division, and Patty Rushing. 408 Hesenger Street, District 6, $271, Alabama Department of Revenue Property Tax Division, John E. Little. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of them? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all three resolutions.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Roger. Answer a question. I just noticed this. It says Alabama Department of Revenue Property and then the other one says Alabama Department... State of Alabama, I'm sorry, Property Tax Division, then the other one says Alabama Department of Revenue.
That's the same folks.
I know it's the same folks, I was just wondering what the... But it's just different wording? Okay. I was just going to say, did they have another division? I missed it or something? Okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three.
Number 12, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 212 budget. This ordinance approves the following budgets. General Fund, $43,504, $43,005,04,293. Special Revenue Funds, $8,119,297. Debt Service Fund, $7,782,866. Enterprise and International Service Fund, $12,055,974. Capital Projects Fund, $7,101,000,000. The proposed general fund budget includes a transfer from the undesignated fund balance of $1,962,440 and provides that all entitled full-time employees shall receive a one-step raise, which is 1.25% as of the first pay period beginning in fiscal year 12. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? The ordinance presented today for the first reading, the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, we didn't discuss this upstairs, but there's no opposition to it at this time. I'd ask for unanimous consent to go ahead and consider it today.
Second.
Okay. As I understand it, there's some of these things that are to be brought up six months from now, again, we looked at. Of course, we can go in and change, the council can anytime it wants to.
We're going to get that under discussion if this goes.
Okay.
If we get unanimous consent, we'll discuss it.
Okay.
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay. Motion, we passed the budget today.
Second.
Now, we can discuss.
Okay. Discuss it.
Okay. You know, again, as you were saying, there are several agencies and several groups that we've cut across the board. And, you know, again, depending on what happens over the next six months, we're going to go back and look at and possibly revisit some of these. But this is a working budget, so, you know, we can change this budget at any time. As a matter of fact, we can come back next week and amend it if we have to, but hopefully we don't have to. But we're... The key thing that people need to understand, and I was just talking to a city employee a few minutes ago, that's why I was late coming down. You know, we've been talking about the city is doing great, and the city is doing great when you compare us to other cities and other communities. But what you've got to understand, in this particular budget, we're taking $1.9 million out of that good time money, as we call it, or somebody called it a few minutes ago, to balance this budget. So, yes, we've got some money, but we're taking $2 million of it, just let's just say $2 million rounded off, that we're taking out of that money to balance this budget. If anything happens unforeseen over the next six months or 12 months, the $10 million, the $12 million, or whatever we have left could be wiped out in a second. I keep reminding folks, a pumper costs right at a million dollars, the ladder truck costs right at a million dollars. The pumper, the fire trucks cost right at a half a million dollars or better. And so, if any one of those things go out, or two of them go out, we could wipe out a budget or surplus at the drop of a hat. So, yes, we've got money, but at the same time, we have to be very, very cautious about what we're doing. And that's one of the reasons why we're trying to get all of our cost in line with what's the norm. And right now, we're out of the norm when it comes down to employees' costs, when it comes down to benefits and the whole nine yards. And it's hard. I'm part of the problem. I was the one who fought years and years not to pass on the cost to employees, because I'm one of those guys who was employed out of place and mine was passed on to me and I didn't like it. And some of it I couldn't afford. But at the same time, now as I travel around and talk to other elected officials and other business people, I find out that if we don't do something, then we're going to be in the same shape that some of them are in, and they don't have anything. Employees lose all their coverage, they shut the business down, they start laying people off, and we haven't had to do any of that. And hopefully, the mayor is not planning on doing that anytime soon as far as laying people off or cutting services. So, we've got to do that, and this is why people need to understand, it's not about we dislike city employees, because these people have worked all their lives. The individual I was talking to, he worked 35 years here, and he was promised certain things, you know, and times have changed. You know, I worked 30 years, a good year. People who worked at Republic Steel, I know a guy who worked 40 years over there, was promised stuff, and he didn't get anything because they shut it down. So, we're just trying to protect what we can and hopefully preserve what we can. And I hope the employees and the retirees understand that, that it's not about trying to hurt them, it's trying to protect all of us so we can continue to be a city and continue to provide the services. That's my spiel, I'm sorry.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, one of the items that, I think you referred to it earlier, that the comment was made that we would revisit in six months, was the reduction in the amount that we had allocated to the Gadsden City School System. Outside agencies were cut across the board 10%, some completely excluded. My thought is that we should not, if we made exceptions, you know, to the 10% across the board rule, then I think that the Gadsden City School System funding should be implemented in full and not suffer the 10% reduction in the amount that we give to the Gadsden City School System. It was promised to be revisited in six months. I'm hoping that we do that, but I'd rather see it reinstated back into the budget and not wait six months.
Can I say something?
Sure. I've been accused of hoarding the money, and this is one reason that we do that. Last year, we had to take, I think, 1.2 million and just obligate it to the budget, but ended up, we didn't have to dip into it, and I think we had a couple hundred thousand. And Lisa, I'm going to put you on the spot, because I don't have my paper with me, and you always know the facts. How much did you show me we had given the Gadsden City School Board lately? Do you have a clue?
They get on average about $1.7 million a year.
Over and above. We had given them, like, this past year, almost $58,000 in discretionary money. We funded projects, we bought equipment, we strings, we buy computers. Thompson Elementary now has iPads. I mean, we give them money all the time. We're supporting them, they have a lot of debt, and they don't have any money. And I know why, but I'll get into that project right there. Anyway, but that's why we need money, and it takes about 3.5 million a month to run things. So, if anybody knows out there where things are going in the next 12 months, are going to be good or bad, come let me know and we'll take another look at it.
I was talking to the mayor of Tuscaloosa not too long ago, and, you know, we have to have some surplus. We ought to have about three months' surplus money in your city to be saved. But after the tornado came through, they took $10 million out of their discretionary money, not their discretionary money, their surplus money. So, you know, that can happen anytime. So, we would be very foolish to spend all the money we have and have a catastrophe and not be able to sustain ourselves. We got a little money put back, but we have to have that money back.
And, Mr. President, one thing I do want to point out is, even with us having some level of undesignated monies, we still don't necessarily have a balance sheet that's healthy enough to go out and leverage debt to engage in any significant economic development or any level of development activity. And that's something that we're working towards now. I think we're well on our way to getting there, but we've got to continue to make some tough decisions in order to get there. So, money in the bank or undesignated monies does not necessarily mean that a city is healthy enough to leverage it to do some development activity. So, again, don't lose sight of that when you start speaking to what our budget, what an annual budget looks like, because you can't really afford to miss that. We've still got some work to do.
I think... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, Robert, I was going to say, I don't have an argument with what the mayor said, what you said, Bill, or anything else, but y'all referenced employees. My thing has always been the small part, wait and see. That didn't happen, and now I have a grasp that it may happen now. But the employees are something that have been out there for years and years, and like you said, they've gotten their things and gone on. I just think we need to critique a few small things, and I'm going to talk to the mayor about it, I tried yesterday, to critique a few things to get premiums down, to get a few things other than jumping in and really putting it on their backs this time. There's two or three things I want to talk about in private before we do that. And that's where I've been coming from the whole day. But I'd like to see that rather than put a 28% on new hire and then what we decided not to do this morning on the other two. But I appreciate it if we can get together and talk about that.
We can. I had about 20 people before 11 o'clock yesterday, I just could never quite work it out, right on your time.
Yeah, I wasn't worried about that.
But I'll be glad to talk to you. And my main objection since I've been here is to keep everything running, all the city's services, all the employees working, because we're obligated to the taxpayers that give us the money to keep everything running just like it is. And we're not going to cut any services, and we're not going to lay anybody off.
Well, I think Ben, you'll have your opportunity down the road here, you'll see in a few minutes. But let me say this, and Lisa's back there yet, and I think David touched on some things that you don't see in the budget, that's not, that don't appear in the budget. I think right now, we're a little over $100 million obligation, is that correct, Lisa, when it comes down to all of our package, our benefits, our cost? It's over $100 million that's out there, and it's not a budgetary item that people can come up and look at and see. You have to go through it and understand the fact that we can't do a whole lot of economic development right now. For instance, if somebody came in and said, "We're going to put an automobile plant here, we need to, for you to commit $5 or $10 million to the project," we couldn't do it right this minute, because of that other obligation we got out there won't let us, you know. And so, what we're trying to do is to get that $100 million obligation down. So, if somebody come along with a major plan to come in and do some economic development, that we can participate in it. You know, we're going to lose anything that comes along at this point in time when it comes down to economic development because of that high cost we've got out there with our employees' benefit, our indebtedness and the whole nine yards, is over $100 million. And that don't show up in the budget.
No, it doesn't, Robert. But my whole thing was, and I know it's out there, and I know there's not anything we can do about it, I don't think, in the next number of years, but I think we ought to have some professional people to come in here, not to have to be paid, that can pretty well lead, guide, direct us on what the correct thing to do is pertaining to employees.
Well, I don't have a problem with paying.
Yeah, well...
I don't have a problem with paying somebody.
Well, when you have...
If we get the cost down, that's what we want.
Sure, but when you have a professional that says he'll come in here and sit down and talk to us and give us advice on what to do, I think we should take advantage of it. And that's one thing I was going to talk to the mayor about.
Okay.
Because I asked Jan, I mean, Jan, Lisa, when we had our budget hearings or talks, if it was okay if I went out and tried to do a little thing to maybe look into it. She said, "Fine, go out and do it." So, I went out and did it. And that's what I wanted to talk about. But professional help, I think, is what we need, another opinion, and then maybe we can get a clear light on what to do.
Mr. President, I don't have an issue with anything that's been said here. I agree with pretty much everything that all our councilperson and the mayor said. I still contend, I still contend that as important as education is to us here in the city of Gadsden, my contention is that the money removed from the budget should be placed back in the budget for education. I'm only talking one topic.
I don't think anybody could disagree with you on that.
Okay, that's all I'm saying, that we do not make the school system suffer more than they have to.
Okay. Everyone true with me?
Oh, yeah. I'm sure we'll have some more discussion. I'm going to call for a question. You're not through.
Have we forgotten that what our problem is is since 1992? We have absorbed insurance, everything you can think of to where we have the catalytic benefits of any city in the state of Alabama. Now, it's tough to have to cut back now, but that's where our problem is. Seventy-some percent of the budget goes to the employees, and that is just not economically or feasible to continue that. It's not all this other cutting that we're talking about, that's where the problem is. I agree with Ben, and that we need to bring somebody in here, a professional, look at it, and then we need to do what they say. And we tried that once before, but the council didn't see fit to do what they said, they went ahead and absorbed everything.
Will you stop talking about me? I've already admitted that I don't know. So, please stop talking about me.
Okay, I won't talk about you anymore. And I agree with Councilman Harris that there's not anything more important. What is the name of the Board of Education? It is the Gadsden City Board of Education. We have an obligation to spend whatever we possibly can to have the best educational system in the whole state if that's necessary, and it is necessary. We have people out there now who have a hard time reading, it's one of the big things. But we need to not complain about the money, not take anything personal, but they may not be, they may not be number one in how they take our money and spend it, but it needs to be spent in the right way, and maybe we need somebody to do the same thing with the Board of Education that Ben's asking us to do here. At any rate, I agree with you, Billy.
Thank you.
We need to put that money back in.
Let me say something else about that. Since I've been in here, I tell you, you can't say that I'm not pro-education. We've worked really hard to give all the money that we give. My problem is accountability. Some of them on the board was in there when the board said the new building would cost $26 million, and it cost over $50, and the county built five high schools for $36 million. I just have a problem with that. If we got accountability, we know what's going on, I'm all for giving them everything we can, and we have been doing that since I've been in office. But, you know, this is a six-month deal, I don't see what the issue is. We're probably going to fund it in six months anyway. We'll probably give them almost that much in six months in discretionary money. I mean, you know, somewhere along the line, you've got to have some board members and some people who will take responsibility and do what they should do, and there's some on there who haven't done that, and that's about it.
Call for a question.
That's true.
Call for a question.
I agree with you, Mayor, you've done good as far as education.
Call for the question. Call for the vote.
Vote. We've got to call for the vote, Abbott.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, 13 is a resolution reappointing members to the plumbers examining board. This reports Eddie Kay, Ivan Pierce for terms expiring July the 19th, 2013, and Jewel Thomas and Philip Higginbotham for terms expiring July the 19th, 2014. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
14 is a resolution authorizing change order number one for bid number 3134. This is for a concrete block retaining wall on the recreational trails program portion, and this amount is $36,619.14. The contractors, K.W. Range Associates, and chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I apologize. I should have asked this question upstairs on this change order. $36,000, is this something that they ran into that wasn't included, or is this additional to something?
Yeah, we're getting ready to close this project out. This is actually any overruns that were in the bid, as far, yeah, it was a unit price bid, so anything that overrun, and there was some additional work completed, like the wall, the overlooks, that you'll see along the path, but most of this cost, the one line item that overran the most was the rock excavation to make it ADA compliant.
Okay, because I know there's a lot of rock up there, and I didn't know, I figured we had to...
There was rock included, but we encountered even more than we thought.
Okay.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
15 is a resolution accepting events of property located at 631 Turntine Street. Richard and Jackie Asche have offered to donate this property in lieu of further nuisance abatement perceived. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation. This is for signal timing system on Meagan Boulevard from Springfield Avenue to 29th Street and George Wallace Drive from Meagan Boulevard to Payden Ridge Avenue. Total estimate cost is $75,000, with $60,000 being federal funds and $15,000 provided by the city. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is what most of the people in East Gadsden have been waiting on for a long time. In particular, the intersection of Springfield Avenue and Meagan Boulevard, where if you drive up to that light after it has just changed, cars will come across Springfield Avenue that have just passed 29th Street on Meagan Boulevard. So, they're going to look at these lights and change it so that there'll be some type of sensibility to the travel on Meagan Boulevard and the entrance onto Meagan Boulevard from other streets. So, this is to be a thankful thing for the people in the city of Gadsden.
And the people traveling through.
Any other discussion?
And the people traveling through.
Yeah.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have three ordinances to present the first reading today. Item 17, 18 regarding health insurance costs have been removed from today's agenda pending revisions. 19 is an ordinance requiring deposit fee for certain garbage collection customers. This requires new customers, current customers with a late payment history, a new customer name on an account, and previous customers without garbage collection services in their name for the prior six months to pay a deposit fee equal to twice a quarterly fee. 20 is an ordinance further regulating exemptions from residential garbage collection fee. This requires persons owing an unpaid balance on a current or prior account to pay in full or make arrangements to pay before being granted an exemption. 21 is an ordinance prohibiting certain trucks on portions of... 21 is an ordinance prohibiting certain trucks on portions of Brook Avenue. Trucks have more than four axles shall not be permitted to drive on Brook Avenue, commonly called Pump Station Road between Walnut Street and Centurion Way. These ordinances are presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on them next week. New business, is there any new business? I think we had any, didn't we?
Mr. President, I have one. I had one. Mr. President, I have a document that I would, legal document number 2011, awarding bid number 3178 for RRF ID-based library management system in the amount of 110,000. This includes additional year maintenance agreement. I would like to move that we consider this, I would like unanimous consideration to consider this, this resolution today.
Second.
Kirk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Kirk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Department reports, committees. You wanna make a little talk for us and tell us about the new stuff up at Nakalula Falls?
Okay. Can you hear me? For the benefit of the TV camera, I'm not the Lisa that they keep referring to out there. I'm Lisa Osborne with Gaston Commercial Development, and I'm one of those who cut 10%. But I'm okay. What I was wanting to talk to you about today, we touched on in pre-council, some may know or may not, but the playground at Nakalula Falls closed yesterday, and it will be closed for an extended period of time. What has happened is the city has signed a contract with Jack's Family Restaurant to locate in the current playground location, and each of you have a photo that I've given you with an overlay of what it's going to look like, so I'm gonna try to help the public visualize what's about to happen. The entrance, the entrance to Jack's will remain there. You will enter the new Jack's, which will be located where the current playground is. And then, anyway, so, and then behind that, where the pine trees are, you'll see those coming down between the Kiwanis Pavilion, that green space between the Kiwanis Pavilion and the back of Jack's, there will be a new playground. Jack's has given us money to help fund the playground, so we're working with Game Time. That contract should be coming forward hopefully next week. Game Time will do the entire playground, the sidewalks, it's gonna be ADA accessible. They're gonna have, we're gonna have different zones, toddler, two-to-five, five-to-12, and it's gonna be an exemplary playground. Jack's has understood very clearly that this deal and the mayor, I want to thank the mayor and Shane Allison, Chad Hare, and Kerry Payne for working on this, because we wanted Jack's to understand that they had to become part of the park, they had to become a lower profile, and their elevation or their, what their store looks like needed to be amended just enough with more stacked stone to become part of the park. So, when you see the Leland Cypress as you drive down the road, and you can't see the playground now, you know, across from Mitchell, those Leland Cypress are staying. You won't be able to see Jack's from that side of the road. You'll be able to see Jack's from within the park, but they've agreed to have a lower profile to truly become part of the park. Once their building is complete, what they will do is they will take down the old Jack's, the one currently there, and that space will become green space. And so, we're, in essence, just opening the park back up. You won't have a building that you see from the roadway anymore, and I'm excited about that. So, have I left out anything?
You did good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And remember, I'm not Lisa Rosser.
Okay. Citizens' request.
Mr., can we have Amanda come up and give us another brief interpretation of what's going on with her next week?
Sure.
Thank you.
I would hate for our citizens to read that in the paper and not know what's happening.
Then that's fine. You have a right to decline.
Okay.
Okay, citizens' request, Alfred Williams, City Council Procedures and Operations. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. State your name and address for the city council.
All right. All right. Alfred Williams, 932 Fourth Avenue, apartment at Toyo. The first thing I want to ask the city council to do is to consider repealing the provision you have where citizens are limited to five minutes to make a presentation to the council. And if you won't repeal that prohibition, then make it, you know, apply to everyone. I've sat in this council and heard people talk on for 10 minutes, and nobody said anything as long as it was something the city wanted to hear. So, if you're not gonna repeal it, which I suggest that you do in 1986 when the city council first came in office, I told them, "Don't limit the citizens' participation in government," and they didn't hear nothing. I come up here in this outfit you see here, because I've been without the ability to change clothes since Saturday when I was taken to the emergency room of a local hospital, and at that hospital arrested for a trumped-up charge of disorderly conduct, and then taken on to the Edward County Jail and treated like a, not even a third-class citizen. So, please repeal that. Out of all the comments that were made about, well, let me say this, I asked to be on this agenda a week or so ago, and I wanted to come in and state an apology. Anything I do, I'm willing, if I make a mistake, I'm willing to come before the public and correct it. And I asked one of the councilperson, Pro Tim was in charge, said, "Let me come, I can relay the message through another county. Let me come and apologize to my family for any false impression I may have created, and being here to speak about giving the toilet dry was a race." Some people took that to mean that I'm saying that people ought to always ride the toilet. I was not trying, you know, to say that. Some might have took it to mean that I'm saying, "Don't buy no automobiles." I was not trying to say that. So, I have come to the point where I have divorced my family, and I divorced my family because of the dirty politics in this city and this county. I told my family, "Don't call me, I'm not gonna call you," because of the way that City of Gaston does business. And out of all the comments were made about the City of Gaston having 11 million dollars, almost 11 million dollars, out of all of them, the comments were made, I only agree with one. And on that basis, well, one person didn't comment. Out of the five that did comment, all except one should be replaced. It would be my recommendation in the next election that, and I'll make it public, you know, who those people are if you want to know. But out of all of them, I wouldn't vote for but one of them, and that was a person that stood for education. I say, if education needs support, give education support. Don't sit up here and sit upon the 11 million dollars and not give education the money that it needs. If a business wanted expanding Gaston, I say, "Give them money." If somebody's gonna come in here and create jobs, we got young men out there on the streets that don't have a job. I was gonna try to put a man, a young man into business Monday, but I couldn't do it because I'm trying to find legal representation to represent me against false charges by the Edward County, well, first of all, City of Gaston brought up the, they wanted arrested me for disorderly conduct at the gas, I mean, at the hospital over down the street. I couldn't, ran a ad in the paper, I couldn't even answer the ad. County still got my cell phone and my belt and my keys to my, I ain't lived in my apartment since I got arrested. So, out of all of them that spoke about, talking about saving all this money, I would vote that each one of them be replaced in the next election. We got too many to address some issues. City, and I got to the council, I'm gonna say this also, please take your time and appoint the chief of this city. Since I might not be given the chance to speak again before this council, please take your time and appoint, we need a person in that position that's gonna be open-minded, that's gonna listen to creative, you know, ideas from the public. Council procedures. Council proceed from the standpoint that they want to give the public appearance that everybody's in agreement. I've heard one councilman say, quote another councilman, say that if all eight of us agree, then, you know, we got too many of them up here. Got too many if everybody's gonna agree all the time. You sit in that council meeting up there on the fourth floor, and you don't, you know, don't hardly do nothing. Then you come down here to present an agreement. The local newspaper has to interpret for the public what's gonna happen in these council meetings. Nobody knows what's going on. We're set up here, a resolution this and a resolution that. How many times you know people will take the time to sit up and explain to the public what's going on in these resolutions?
Your time's up.
All right, thank you.
Jimmy Marker. See here. Okay, marks by the mayor and the council. Ben, you want to start?
Sure. I did want to, Lisa Osborne left, and I did want to thank her, DGI, the mayor, Shane, for that work at Nakalula Falls. I mean, it's gonna be something else. I know why you didn't want me up there, it never would've gotten done, but I appreciate that. Y'all deserve a clap on the back, but even the people up there are happy about that, I'm sure. Mayor, I was listening to you. I wrote down something. The Gaston City Board of Education budget, correct me if I'm wrong, is 48 million dollars this year? Ain't it right at 48?
Do you know Lisa, it seemed like I read that.
Yeah, and I think ours is 43. It hit me, the Board of Education's got a $5 million budget higher than this whole city of Gaston, and I'm sure that Dr. Miller can explain why, and I'm sure there's a reason why it is, and I don't want any teachers losing their jobs, and I don't want, I don't want service cut and all that. So, what I'd like to ask is for Dr. Miller to come to the pre-council one morning and discuss his budget, and let's just see where he is. I'd like to hear that, just to kind of see where we are. Who'd I ask to request that?
I think according to what I read the other day, they're in pretty good shape, got a circle of us.
Well, that's why I'd like to have him here to find out, because we're talking about education, you know.
Turn your mic off. We get a report from the board once a month?
I haven't seen him in a while, since the budget came out. I'm talking strictly about the budget.
Okay.
I know we see Dr. Miller's been really good about coming around, but I want him to come and discuss the budget so we can all see, and Mr. Harris, I know he wants to know about the other 10% or whatever, and so do I, but I think he can put a light on it, and if we disagree, we can show tell him at that time.
Is it the second Tuesday?
It used to be an automatic, but it's not anymore.
But he comes on a four-week cycle, though.
That's a four-week cycle. I think it was the second Tuesday of the month that he comes to give the report, I think.
Well, the good news is that the budget's just out, and that's what I'd like to see, the budget.
You'll take care of that one, sure.
I think they passed it Tuesday night, so I don't know why he couldn't explain it.
See, that's right. On the next meeting, he'll come and explain it to us.
But we need to invite him anyway, and he'll know what we're asking for.
Johnny?
I would like to say, I think that everyone sitting at this podium up here knows how important education is, and if you'll just check our track record, I have our discretionary fund, everybody up here gives money to education for different projects that all the schools have, only anybody that's ever turned anybody down unless it was completely out of money. But you can check, everybody up here, we always give to cheerleaders, football, baseball, golf, swimming, tennis, anything we can give to, we try to help, you know, the Board of Education. But anyway, I'm changing a note. October the 15th, from 6:00 to 10:00 o'clock, we're gonna have a music on Megan, it'll be at the gazebo. We got three or four bands lined up, it will be free, you have to come out and enjoy that. And also, October the 27th, from 5:00 to 7:00, we will have trick-or-treat on Wall Street, looking for about 30,000 little kids, come out there and their parents. Just wish everybody would come and enjoy it down there. That's all I got.
I'd just like to commend Lisa and Shane and all, everybody that worked on the project at, on the falls at the mountain, moving Jack's, and I think everybody's gonna really be pleased when they see the end results of it. It's gonna take a little time to get the playground moved, but it'll be an improved, state-of-the-art playground for our kids, so I think everybody's gonna be very excited when they see the thing completed, which will be in early spring. That's all I have.
Bill, Robert, you might remind everybody to watch the Gaston Times to see that article and then see a map of schematic of what you call it off the bar.
Yeah, I think the Gaston Times is gonna do the job on that, yeah.
I need to get the Gaston Times to look.
Okay. Watch this. You know, hopefully, we talked about it upstairs, and I asked Roger about this, Alabama Department of Revenue and then the State of Alabama Property Tax Division, the same group. I understand that there's gonna be a move on in the legislature, hopefully, to streamline the process where cities can reclaim the properties where people are not paying taxes on it at a reasonable, I won't say reasonable rate, a reasonable paperwork, and hopefully get those pieces of property back on the tax road by improving them, selling them, or doing whatever. So, I'm looking forward to that. With the climate that we've got down in Montgomery right now, I'm not gonna hold my breath, but I just hope we can get it done. The other thing, and that brings me to the other thing about state legislature and some local stuff, is the civil service. I wasn't here last week, so I didn't get a chance to comment, but I'm still hot under the collar about all these folks talking all this crazy bull, and I'm glad we got a family program here, 'cause otherwise I would say some other words. They're talking about it's not political. That's a bunch of bull, you know what. It can't get any more political than it is now. Here you got legislators saying that, "Well, I don't know, I gotta look at it." What you gotta look at? There's only two or three cities in the state of Alabama who have anything similar to what we've got. We got over 400 municipalities, and they all, 400, I know, 430-some of us, it's about 440, so 430-some of them hire and fire police and fire chiefs through their local government. So, if the 430-some municipalities can do it, then what's wrong with it? Why you gotta think about it? Why you got, 'cause it's political. You want to control. People in Montgomery want to control who we select as our police chief and our fire chief. And you gotta ask the question, "Why?" If it's so important for people in Montgomery that they don't want to give it to the local folks to do. Think about that. And then you got a civil service board who's appointed by the governor, who's sitting here saying, "Well, we need to do this right away." Why you need to do it right away, unless you're trying to control? We've got an acting police chief appointed. Again, you know, that's the mayor's choice. I had another choice, but she's gonna retire, I mean, I'm sorry. But why is all this stuff going on? It's plain and simple, it's all politics. And for them to sit there and say, they just tell them a bald face, you know what, and I'm calling it like I see it, you've got three people on the civil service board who's trying to control who our police chief is gonna be. Three people. Quote me, Andy. Three people on the civil service board who's trying to control who our police chief is gonna be, and they in a hurry to do so. If it ain't political, why are you in a hurry? Leave this man where he is. He's doing a great job, he's been around, he knows what's going on in the city. Unless you've got an agenda and you want to put somebody in that slot to continue what happened to Mr. Williams, or to continue what happens to another family that was here this morning who didn't get a chance to talk. We had two incidents over the weekend where police officers beat up citizens, that I know of. I mean, there's probably more than that, but I know of two incidents. This mess and this madness has to stop. But if you're trying to... gonna be, and they in a hurry to do so. If it ain't political, why you in a hurry? Leave this man where he is. He's doing a great job, he's been around, he knows what's going on in the city. Unless you've got an agenda and you want to put somebody in that slot to continue what happened to Mr. Williams, or to continue what happens to another family that was here this morning who didn't get a chance to talk. We had two incidents over the weekend where police officers beat up citizens, that I know of. I mean, it's probably more than that, but I know of two incidents. This mess and this madness has to stop. But if you're trying to protect the system and you're trying to get in a hurry to put somebody in that system so you can protect it, then you can't get any more political than that. Leave this man alone, give this man an opportunity to run the police department, let's see what's going on down there, and let's see if we can get some things straightened. Unless, like I said earlier, if it's all political and you want to get your henchmen in there, then by all means, civil service board, go ahead on and appoint your chief, and I'll give you the name as soon as, well, I should give it to you today, I know who they want. Or the civil service board, go ahead on and change it and give us the right and the authority to do what we need to do here in this city as elected officials. We're not saying put all of the police department and all the fire department out under civil service, because I think they need some protection down there, the employees do. We're just talking about the administrative staff. And I challenge the civil service board, and I also challenge the legislative delegation, if that system is so great, then take every department head we have at the City of Gaston and put them under there and protect them. Because we all bad folks up here, and we gonna fire every last department head. Now, that's what you're saying, that's why you're protecting the chiefs, because you don't want the mayor or the council to fire them, or whatever the case may be. So, put all the department heads up under it. The mayor hires the fire department heads every day if he wanted to. Nobody says anything about the library director, or the streets and sanitation person, the city attorney, or any of these others, the engineer, but they want to protect the police and fire department. I wonder why? I don't come in contact with the police and fire department. I come in contact with the library. Our citizens come in contact with them on a daily day basis. Protect the library director, she might do something, throw somebody out or something. Protect the streets and sanitation person, because people don't pick up the trash or the garbage. And the mayor could fire him tomorrow if he wanted to. We come in contact with those folks every day. The average citizen don't come in contact with the police department, nor the fire department. And yet you want to protect those two directors. There's gotta be a reason for that. And if that ain't political, then I don't know what the heck it is.
Derek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple things from me. I'm just glad to look down there and not see my mayor in a sling. That's happened down the road from us, and I'm just, I appreciate the fact that we don't have that kind of relationship on our council. So, say what you will or may about this council, but just good to look down there and not see him in a sling, so.
We won't take it outside, my dear.
We won't take it outside, huh? So, I do want to caution my fellow council members, as much as I love them and care for them, I do want to just always caution us to not politicize our budget, in particular our budget discussions. I think we all have to make some very tough budget decisions at least once a year, and a lot of times during the course of the year. And I think Johnny said, Councilman Cannon said it best, I mean, we all are pro, very much pro education, and I think our track records speak to that. But, you know, again, I do want us to be careful not to over-politicize that whole budget discussion, because I think at the end of the day, all of us are very, very much in favor of keeping whatever we've allocated historically to the Gaston City School Systems. I think we're all in favor of keeping it at that level. But, you know, I think you have to use some creative budgetary techniques in order to make sure that you're creating a healthy balance sheet. And, you know, that's not something that's always popular, and it sounds like a lot of double speak sometimes, but again, financially, you have to be creative in this day and age to ensure that you project a healthy balance sheet. So, again, I use that term repetitively because I want it to become something that we're familiar with. A healthy balance sheet is very important in order for this city to project well. Not just undesignated funds, not just money in the bank, we have to have a healthy balance The folks that have been cut, and I, you know, I want to commend Lisa, not just for the work that she does for us in marketing the city for commercial development. So much of what you see around us happening comes at the, after she's really, after she's negotiated and leveraged every asset that we've got in the city to draw commercial development and private investment. But I want it to be clear that those who were cutting this budget ten percent, that there is nothing within that that speaks to the lack of legitimacy or relevancy to these organizations. I think they're very much needful. If they weren't needful, they wouldn't be in the 2012 budget. But again, this is just another tough decision that we have to make in order to be responsible in terms of how we spend the money and how we exercise our fiduciary responsibility. The last thing I have, and I'm very proud of this fact, this past weekend, we conducted the 2011 youth explosion, Gaston Youth Explosion, this was the first annual, and we're gonna plan to do this going forward. I am proud to say that we had approximately two hundred and fifty, maybe, you know, somewhere in the middle of two fifty and three hundred kids in attendance. There were no incidents. Our panelists came out and participated at a very high level. Those kids asked some very difficult and some very tough questions. One of the things that was kind of disheartening is that our children seemed to be focused on social issues. They are heavily focused on social issues and not so much focused on career issues. And it's always a little disheartening to see a fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old child focused on what people think about them as opposed to what they're gonna be when they grow up. So, that was, again, very concerning for me, but we gave them some meaningful feedback, I believe. And again, it was a very good event. We were able to give away a lot of gift cards, gave away an e-reader, and I want to, again, pleasing those me as I identify a few folks that stepped up and really made this event helpful and possible. I want to thank the mayor and the council. I want to thank the Gaston City School System, the Gaston City Police Department, Quality of Life Health Services, Chick-fil-A, Gaston Job Corps Center for some outstanding cookies, J and M Productions, Mix 102.9, and DJ Mike Miller, Buffalo Rock, Charter Media, the Gaston Times, and Andy Powell, and all of the panelists and the committee members that stepped up to support us as well. We got just a wealth of support, and the event went off really, really well. And again, it's gonna be bigger next year. There was all the buzz on Facebook over the weekend, I even had my sixteen-year-old daughter tell me that, which means it's true. And so, I'm just excited about what happened. And again, there were no events, no issues. I mean, we had an after-party at Convention Hall after the fact, and there were no fights, no skirmishes, none of that. You know, we just, we had to make sure we kept the lights up, but outside of that, everything was good. Everything was fine. So, again, for those of you that supported and participated and prayed for that event, and whatever the level of your contribution was, I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would not like for anyone here in the public to think that my thoughts and my ideals about the budget, you know, and the reduction that we have planned for the Gaston City School System is politicized. It's just a feeling that I have about the Gaston City School System. And I do stand by the fact that those cuts should not be there. I would like to thank the Gaston Times for its advertising of my meeting that we had this past Monday, last night. Sometimes I had not been getting there, Andy, but this time I was there twice. I was there on Saturday and Sunday. So, everybody would have been informed about the fact that District One had a meeting last night, and we had as our guest Mike Hilton, supervisor in Public Works. And we had a good turnout last night, and Mike explained a lot to our district. A very understanding meeting, a very down-to-earth and very civil meeting about what the citizens' responsibilities are as far as maintenance of their lawns, and what the city's responsibility is. And everybody last night went away from that meeting with an understanding of what their responsibilities are as far as the problem that we have, having the city go in and cut property that should not be maintained, or that should be maintained by the citizens. So, it was a very good and informative meeting, and I appreciate Mike for coming out to explain that to our citizens. It was really a good meeting, and they really learned something. I would like to see, we know that problem exists all over the City of Gaston. I'd like to see Mike go into every district and explain that, because it will give our citizens a lot better idea of what the ordinances are and how they are implemented. It's really a good thing, and I thank Mike again for that, and Public Works for being there last night. The Sickle Cell Walkathon is still scheduled for October the eighth at Moraine Park. We will ask everyone if they want to participate, it starts at nine o'clock and will end promptly at twelve o'clock. But please be mindful of this event and participate wherever you can with this walkathon. It's very important, it's a very big event, it'll bring a lot of recognition to the City of Gaston, where people from, like we said, outside the city, surrounding counties here to participate, so come out and have a fun morning of walking on October eighth. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, I want to, excuse me, explain a couple of things, what Councilman Avery was referring to on the civil service board. We have about fifteen directors at City Hall. I haven't fired anybody. We can't just come in and say, "You're fired." It's, there's a thing called just cause. If you don't have reason that you can prove in court, you're not gonna fire anybody. And we haven't fired anybody. That's not the position I'm trying to have the chief, the fire and police chief, under the mayor. We have a, I think forty percent of our budget has to deal with the police and fire. You know, we have, most of the calls we get are probably about police and fires things, mostly the police. And the reason being is because a lot of things left are not handled. I'm the one that gets most of the calls. And all I want is when I get eight or ten calls about something, I can call down there and somebody will check into it and take care of it. And, you know, like he said too, there's only a couple of cities, you know, why don't we go ahead and get a civil service board in Rainbow City, South Side, Glencoe, and all the rest of places? In addition to that, we sent a unanimous resolution to the legislative delegation locally to pass that taking them out from under the civil service board. Normally, when a governing body sends something to its local legislators, they act on it, especially when a couple of them don't even live in the City of Gaston. And I'm not being ugly, I'm just stating facts that people never seem to get out. So, you know, nobody's wanting to fire any directors, I haven't fired anybody or laid any off, or whatever. So, that has nothing to do with the issue, it's because you have to work with them so much, and there's so much money involved, and then there's public safety involved, which is the most important thing. Another thing on our money, our debt, I think Lisa said about sixty-five million we owe in payments? Seventy-six million, okay. So, we owe about seventy-six million in payments. And, you know, we have bond issues, the average payoff on them is twenty, twenty-three, twelve more years. So, you know, there's not a lot of money floating around after we pay all the bills every month. A lot of places have cut out departments, cut out retirement, cut out a lot of things. And I know everybody didn't want to hear that, who don't want to listen to the facts, but that is the fact and the way it is. Some cities have done away with whole police and fire departments, as well as Public Works, if you keep up and read. Also, I've been here five years, we got a seven million dollar line of credit to build Four Lane Airport Road, to open that up for development out there, about five hundred acres now, the airport and Keystone Foods, Southern Coal Storage is out there, that helps create jobs. And we also spent about two million, I think it was a little over two million, on career tech building at Gaston High School. It's probably the best, finest-equipped career tech building in the state, a city of our size, I'm sure it is. And then we ended up, we came in under budget about two million, so we're gonna have about four point two, five million, or whatever with it we financed, I believe, or maybe five. We got a little money to replace Black Creek Parkway, I mean, Black Creek Road on Tuscaloosa there, and I'm sorry, not Black Creek, Tuscaloosa, Andy, the bridge has got to be replaced. So, we haven't really borrowed any of that twenty-twenty-three bond stuff for any of that seventy-six million that we have debt on. I just want everybody to always get the facts, because it's so hard to get the information, and most of the rumors out there are always not true. Thank you. Black Creek Trail, we were gonna have a little ribbon cutting today for the first part of it, it's opening, but supposedly it's gonna rain, it is now, so we're gonna postpone that to later next week, and we'll probably announce it at the next council meeting, is that okay?
Don't forget what our problem is, and how it started and how it's gone on for, what, some fifteen years. And we finally did what's responsible in its last time. And the problem is not in the outside agencies, they hadn't had an increase in, I don't know when. The increase still is in the benefits that we're paying to the employees, and I love them all. We've got some great employees, they're dedicated, they've done a great job for the city. This city is probably in best shape of most cities in the whole state, and most of it's due to the employees. And I'm forgiving them everything we possibly can, but I think we've way overdone it. I entertain a motion we adjourn.